So we'll bring this meeting of the Planning Commission to order this morning. Good morning, everyone. We always open our meetings with a period of 10 minutes at least allowed for public comment. I have two requests for a public comment. If there are any other people in the audience that would like to speak that haven't filled one out, please do, and we'll be happy to hear you. Our first speaker is Paul Conti.
Good morning. My name is Paul Conti. I'm Chair of the Jefferson Westside Neighbors, and I'd like to address the potential for MPT extensions into several areas, including into areas in the Jefferson Westside neighbors. The first that I learned about the potential for expanding into JWN along the West 6th, 7th Avenue corridor was when I read the AIS, and I noticed that the AIS says that that expansion, for instance, according to state law, could be as much as a quarter-mile on either side of the corridor, which would eat deeply into the JWN's SJW areas, as well as the medium-density residential areas, as well as commercial. Cutting to the chase, I don't think there would be a lot of difficulty with renewing the MPT corridor that included the commercial areas that are south of West 7th, but that's not what staff is putting forward to you or to council. It's much broader than that. There are some real problems with doing that without involving the neighborhood associations. I don't believe any of the other neighborhood associations that are involved around the other three target areas being recommended by staff have been engaged in the discussion either. But in particular, in the JWN, as I hope you'll take a chance as you're watching the staff's presentation to read this letter, two of the areas being considered for MPT expansion are currently zoned illegally. And the JWN, although I have met with city staff, including the Deputy City Attorney, have not yet received any response despite promises to receive one. And so we're considering actually filing a petition to DLCDC to compel enforcement, to compel the city to comply. There are also some other issues covering the letter. I'm not going to go through those. I hope you get a chance to read them. But what I request, respectfully request you do at this meeting, is to recommend to council that they not make any informal or formal decisions on even selecting, winnowing down, the locations until they have engaged the neighborhood associations that would be impacted. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Can you explain briefly, since we haven't seen this, how the zoning is illegal? What's wrong with it?
About 250 lots that are currently zoned are three limited high-density residential or actually designated medium-density residential in the comprehensive plan, and that's non-compliant. For instance, some of the implications of that, first off, the city is expected to come into compliance. The metro plan, or comprehensive plan, rather dominates code, and the city is expected to bring their code into compliance with their comprehensive plan. Among the other implications are, I've checked with the representative from DLCD, and he said, yes, this would be a matter which we could bring a petition for LCDC to compel the city to comply. We tried to work through it cooperatively, but I met early in the summer with, excuse me, I advised the Assistant City Manager of this problem early in the summer, held a meeting with her, the Planning Director, and the Deputy City Attorney. The Deputy City Attorney acknowledged this non-compliance, and I was assured that we were going to receive a staff response to take action to mitigate it in the short term and correct it in the long term. Two weeks ago, after repeated requests, I received an email from the Assistant City Attorney saying that she would provide the staff response by September 30th. No response was forthcoming. Any other questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Okay, thanks.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Schoenberger. Did I pronounce that right, Tim?
Yes, that's close enough. Right here.
Sure.
Thank you. Good morning. Commissioners and staff, subject is consideration of applying MPT program to the four neighborhoods. The staff report provides a brief, one-paragraph analysis on South Willamette, Midtown, Franklin Boulevard, and Trainsong, but provides no such analysis on West University, although it states that that might be a go for continuing MPT program. Just briefly, West University provides a link between downtown and the University of Oregon, so it's logical to look at it for incentives because it's a logical place for development to boom. I want to point out the obvious, the university area contains a lot of craftsman-style, older homes from the period of the 1920s through the 1940s where people are, where local people are setting up businesses and renovating those old houses and making them look really nice and having successful businesses, bureaus, the fabric store, day spa, pearl day spa, and like that. And I'm concerned that MPT not provide incentives to tear down and demo and build something new in those places. I'd ask, I think the Planning Commission is the appropriate citizen's body to make a recommendation to the city council on continuing the MPT for West University, and I'd respectfully ask you to do, to give it full consideration today.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenberger. Any questions? I'm looking at the audience to make sure there's no other public comments that are wanted here. Have you filled out a form, sir?
I've just laid it out right now.
Please come forward.
I understand that the good planning commission is considering--
Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Carlos Barera. I live at 2470 Olive Street. I'm the co-chair of the Friendly Area Neighborhood Association, and I'm speaking here on the rehack. So I'm aware that this commission is considering a, advocating for a MPT to be extended into the South Willamette area. This is something that I think we have not had enough time to give consideration to, and I would like to request that this agency, another agencies delay recommending that to give us time to consider the effect that MPT would have on our neighborhood. I've been involved with the Envision process for some time, have gone to numerous workshops and part of the transportation, I forget the acronym for it, the name of the group that's been considering the Envision Eugene process. Still, and at this last workshop, MPT was mentioned. Still, it's not something that we've had time to consider. And so, and I am aware that it has produced, that MPT has produced in some areas developments that have produced objectionable developments, and I think that we would like to take that, have time to take that into consideration and to develop our own position on that particular subject. That's all.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. You can just give it to me.
With that, we'll proceed to the next agenda item, which is multi-unit property tax exemption. I'll say update right now by Ann Lawrence. Thank you, Ann. Go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity. I want to mention that what's on the screen, we weren't able to turn off. It relates to the next presentation, which actually dovetails with this one, but I'm not giving a PowerPoint. Good? I do appreciate this opportunity. I came and spoke with Planning Commission July 18th, prior to going to council on July 20th. We're speaking here today, prior to going to council on this coming Wednesday, and in each case, I did and will bring your comments with me when we present at council. What I'd like to talk about is the multi-unit property tax exemption, MPT, and what has happened so far and what our recommendation is. After we spoke with you last July, we went to council, and council took a series of actions and essentially extended MPT for the downtown plan area. The rest of the areas that are currently included in the MPT boundary, those areas sunset January 1st, coming up, January 1st of 2012. So effectively, no more projects can happen in those areas unless council takes further action to extend MPT in those areas. But council did extend for the downtown plan boundary area. So what we're doing when we go back to council, and what I'd like to talk to you all about today, is what our strategy is for considering MPT in the context of Envision Eugene and going forward and seeing where MPT is appropriate. I'm not asking today for a decision where exactly we're going to put MPT or where the boundaries are, and that's not what we're asking at council. What we're trying to do is identify those areas, corridors or commercial areas, where it's appropriate for us to continue the public engagement process through Envision Eugene and see if MPT is appropriate for those areas. So what we did is we looked at, I'm going to direct your attention to the map on the wall over there, we looked at the six key transit corridors that Envision Eugene identified and the core commercial areas, and we considered each of them, and the task was to say, which ones should we recommend for further study first? Again, not where the MPT boundary should be, but which ones should we consider? And we considered for each area what the development potential is, are these areas ripe for development? Is there a need for incentives? Have these areas had any recent area planning and other additional factors? And the other additional factors is what we've been hearing and the insight that we received from council through July into September. What we are proposing at this time, and what I would like comment back on, is to consider four areas going forward for additional study, beginning with West University. The issue there is the West University area has been a part of the MPT program in the past. Again, that area sunsets this coming January. We've heard both at the council level and again responding to the citizen comment here that there's been a lot of development in the West University area, and perhaps MPT isn't as needed or as appropriate. We've also received citizen comments saying that MPT in West University area in particular, the fact that those projects that are applying for a MPT go to the neighborhood group for comment has enabled compatibility issues to potentially be more explicitly addressed. So West University is an area that we would like to start with. Our idea is to begin with a community forum so that there's more opportunity to look at the issues and hear comments rather than just, say, the three-minute public comment period before council or the citizen comment period before Planning Commission. We'd actually like to have a conversation about West University. For the three other areas, South Willamette, Franklin Corridor, and Trainsong, 6th and 7th, I'd like to talk about each one of those in particular. I'd like to start with South Willamette. As you know, and as Trish will show you in just a minute, the South Willamette corridor is in the process of an area plan. Because we're trying to talk about MPT as an Envision Eugene implementation tool, we would like the MPT consideration to come out of the insights from that area planning process. So instead of saying, here's exactly where the MPT boundary should be, we would like to have MPT be a part of the implementation tool for the concept plan that results from that citizen-intensive process. We'd also like to include Midtown as part of South Willamette, and it may be that we have to have a separate community forum or whatever to talk about Midtown, but that is really the link between South Willamette into the downtown plan area. For the Franklin Corridor, as you know, the whole Walnut Station planning process resulted in code changes, so we have insight from that process that we may be able to apply towards that area in consideration of applying MPT in that area. And what we would like to do is have another opportunity to make sure that citizens in that area, as well as elected and appointed officials, weigh in on the Franklin Corridor. But it could be that that area, because of the recent area planning and because of the development interest, MPT could potentially be applied there sooner. For the 6th, 7th, Trainsong area, as you know, that area is currently eligible for MPT, but we haven't had yet the discussion to say, how wide should that corridor be? Is it really just 6th, 7th, and up into the Trainsong area? Is it all the commercial properties? Does that area extend, as one counselor indicated, should be 5th to 8th? We haven't had that conversation yet. So what we're proposing at this time is that the areas that we're looking at, really the three corridors plus the fourth, if you consider West University, that we start the discussion and see where the, to see if MPT is appropriate and to see where the boundaries of the MPT-approved area should be. So the other areas, the other corridors on the map, the other areas that have been identified through Envision Eugene, those areas may not be coming forward as quickly, but ideally, MPT would be used as a tool to implement the concepts and strategies from Envision Eugene, and all of the areas would come back for consideration. But we wanted a way to develop a hierarchy, which areas we consider first. So I'm just going to sum up. We'd like to start with West University and engage a little bit of a broader discussion to determine where the boundary should be, what level of a planning process we might need, and for example, if there are additional criteria that we want to put into the MPT approval process. So we'll start with West University, listen to the insights that will be coming forward as a result of the South Willamette process, taking a closer look at Midtown, also looking at Walnut area, actually the Franklin Corridor, as well as the Trainsong area. Those are the areas we'd like to just start the discussion with, not yet make the decisions on. So, and I'm available for any questions either on those areas or the MPT program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
I'll start. Several questions, while I'll take turns with others. Once a project is accepted for MPT, wherever it might be, how long is the tax exemption? And then, a broader question, is there some impact study been done on what that tax exemption does to the tax base of the city or the rev tax revenues of the city?
Once a project is approved for MPT, it then has to be constructed. After the construction is complete and the project is complete, then there's a 10-year property tax exemption. We've looked, I would say there have been--
Has that been extended, ma'am?
No, there's not a 10-year, there's not an extension beyond the 10 years. Sometimes there's an extension if the project takes too long to complete or longer than was initially approved. We've had 23 projects completed through the MPT program, which is about a 30-year period. So it's not a huge number, and right now, 11 of those projects have completed the exemption period and are now back paying taxes. Based on our analysis of those projects, we see on average that the projects paid about $3,000 in taxes before and about $45,000 in taxes after--
$4,500?
Thank you, $45,000--
$4,500.
--in taxes, from $3,000 to $45,000 after the project is complete and on the tax rolls. So it's about a thousand percent increase. Am I answering the question you've asked? Okay.
Commissioner Duncan.
Actually, I think, ma'am, for clarification, if I'm not mistaken, the tax abatement program abates only taxes above what the tax base was at the time of the exemption. So if a property was paying property taxes, they still continue to pay that same amount. It's like, if a building's removed, it's not just the land, it's the land and what the old buildings were generating in taxes, correct?
It's mostly correct. If there's a property, some of the properties, in fact, weren't paying any taxes. They were property owned by the city, so they didn't, they didn't pay taxes before. Some properties were vacant before, and they were only paying taxes on the land. Some properties had an improvement, so they don't continue to pay for that improvement once it's been removed. But the tax abatement is on the improvement to the property as a result of the MPT program. So if you had a house that you'd taken off the property, you're not paying taxes for that property. You're paying taxes on the land itself until the MPT is completed. However, one kind of a finer-grain detail, in the past, if the property, I'll use high street terrace, if the property included commercial, the commercial portion wasn't exempt, and so during the 10-year exemption period, the property owner would be paying for the commercial, tax on the commercial property, on the commercial uses, as well as the land. But the state legislation has just changed as a way to encourage more mixed use in addition to the higher-density housing by allowing the commercial uses to be exempt if they're considered a public benefit. So if you have a mixed-use project going in, it's primarily residential, but you have some commercial uses on the ground floor, we see that as a benefit. That's part of the whole concept of walkability and mix of uses. You are now allowed to have the commercial improvements exempt in addition to the residential portion during the 10-year exemption period. And then the whole thing, both residential and commercial, after the exemption period, you pay taxes on the whole thing.
Commissioner Leiter.
The last time we met, there was a question about how to incorp, excuse me, how to involve new areas in MPT, and when we talked, we didn't know the answer, if it had to be a contiguous expansion of the existing boundary area or if separate areas could form. Do you know that? No?
Yes. According to the state statute, it has to either be a core commercial area or a transit-oriented area, and the transit-oriented area does not need to be contiguous to the core commercial area. So drawing your attention back to the map, you can see where the corridors come together. Obviously, that's the downtown core. West University was included previously, it was contiguous, and it was one whole area. But you could also have transit-oriented areas separate from the core commercial area.
And that's basically what you're looking at with these new areas, is the transit corridors?
We are looking at the transit corridors, and, but this is, this is a good example of where we need additional information for refinement, because Midtown, South Willamette, and then Midtown feeds into the downtown plan area. Do we want to, as a community, include all of that area? Franklin, of course, feeds also, comes Broadway feeds back in through West University into the downtown core area. We need to have more insight and more discussion before we make a recommendation on exactly how the transit-oriented area ties into the core commercial area.
So to fast-forward a little bit, once you pursue the discussions with the various neighborhoods and assuming you get buy-in from them and lay concerns and address other issues, once a MPT area is identified, does anybody who applies for MPT get MPT, or are there then further development, developer criteria that the developer has to address before it's approved? Is there kind of a second step to it?
There is. You are eligible to apply if you're an area that has been so designated by ordinance, but there's essentially public benefit criteria, and council approves each MPT on a case-by-case basis. There's a scoring system based on that public benefit criteria, but it is not an automatic approval, reviewed each by each.
And is part of that, the quality of the development, is difficult, is that may or may not be to define?
It's the quality of the development. It's also a but-for provision. In other words, the applicant has to demonstrate that the project would not be able to go forward but for the MPT. In other words, it, this is a financial tool to enable projects to go forward that couldn't go forward on their own. The idea is that we want to encourage development where we want it. Some of those are not as financially strong as others, and so this is an incentive that we would use. But each MPT has to pass the but-for provision.
Is housing affordability somehow worked into that criteria?
Housing affordability is worked in. It's actually considered in terms of the number of units and the overall cost. It's, so it's included as part of the application picture, and then council has the opportunity to approve or deny.
Commissioner Belcher.
Does MPT have any requirement or provision that either encourages or discourages property ownership in these, these buildings?
I'm hesitant. I feel like there's, that's a question that I need to go back and look at the statute, but my understanding is that it's been for rental housing and ownership housing, both. So if that's your question, for example, the Tate is an ownership property, Broadway Place is rental property, so it's a multi-unit property. So beyond that, I need to go back and reread the state statute.
That answers my question. Thank you. Can I continue?
Sure.
My next question is, when council approves or disapproves a project, do they have pre-existing standards that they're measuring against, or do they have the opportunity to judge each one on its own merits by whatever criteria they think are important at the time?
No, there's, there's set criteria that are adopted as part of the ordinance, and that's the public benefit criteria. So each project has to demonstrate their compliance with that criteria, and then each one is reviewed on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. And when do those criteria get set? Is that part of the rest of this process? Is there an opportunity for involvement in how that goes?
There is an opportunity for involvement, and they are set as part of the ordinance. And so I just reread that ordinance, and it shows the public benefit criteria. One of the requirements is that the neighborhood have an opportunity to comment. It doesn't say that the neighborhood gets to approve or deny, but that the neighborhood gets to be involved. So one possibility, when we go forward, if we're talking about what criteria we might say, we might want to include, we could say, properties that are eligible for listing on the National Historic Register are not eligible to be taken down for MPT. We could, I'm using that as an example, not, so don't, I can't track that word for word because I would certainly have to go back and, and see what would be appropriate. We could say there are criteria related to the age of the property, the historic character of the property. You could do that. You, meaning the community, could do that. Council would then adopt the ordinance if they chose.
So what is the process for determining how that ordinance will be revised, if it's revised?
Well, I'll give you the downtown plan, one, downtown plan area as an example. Council directed staff to go forward with preparing an ordinance using the downtown plan boundary as the MPT boundary, and at that time, the ordinance that was put forward for public hearing included the public benefit criteria. So what we would do, what I'm assuming would happen, is when these conversations go forward and are tied in with the Envision Eugene process, that the conversation and the recommendation from the community, from Planning Commission, and ultimately city council will be included as part of draft public benefit criteria that get put into the ordinance and then acted on.
And will there be an opportunity for the Planning Commission to submit their proposals for that ordinance when the time comes?
Yes. The planning, the hearing was held before city council, so I don't believe that the public hearing is held at the Planning Commission level. It's just, we just had the one public hearing. But I think I would defer to Lisa and Carolyn as to how the Planning Commission wants to be included in this process. Do you want to pick that up?
Well, I know last time we came to talk to you about MPT, you expressed an interest in being able to forward recommendations to council before they took action, which is one of the reasons why we're here today. And so I would suggest that as we do continue to look at the areas, if these are the areas that we indeed do look at and refine kind of the recommendations around those, that we bring those back to this body, and you have a chance to weigh in before we go to council.
Thank you. I'd like that. So is it fair to characterize what you're doing today as just asking if we can go forward with further study? That no decisions are being made now, that, and there will be opportunity for neighborhoods to be involved in those discussions? So I'm understanding correctly?
Yep. Yes. We need a place to start the conversation, rather than going forward with all of the areas identified from, through Envision Eugene. We're saying that some areas go forward now, the other areas can go forward at a later time.
Okay. I guess my final comment is, I know that as co-chair of the River Road Community Organization, we're very interested in what we can do to make our corridor work effectively, so I wish it was on the list now, but it isn't, and I guess I understand that. Thank you.
Commissioner Duncan.
I'm curious. You indicated there's been 23 projects over 30 years. You indicated there's been 23 projects over 30 years that have got approved MPTIs. Is there any plan to go back and analyze those properties to find out, one, you know, what was it about MPTI that made it work? And then to further that and go to the different neighborhoods, the different areas, and say, if we know that MPTI creates an opportunity to remove an older building and put more density in, it would seem appropriate for input to neighborhoods and to everyone else to have that analysis done in such a way that you could talk about the effectiveness of the program. If you put it in over the entire area you're talking about here, but you achieve less than one project a year, is it even reasonable to go forth with such an aggressive plan? Particularly given that, as you say, council, after money is spent by people to go forth with these projects, council can deny those projects, and a lot of money is spent and is not recouped by somebody trying to take the risk on. Is there any plan to do that kind of analysis in these areas?
We have done some analysis, and I'm just making a note of some of the other ideas that I just heard from you. There have been 22 projects completed. There are four still under construction. So 23 that have been completed and four, I believe, that are still under construction. What we did is we looked, for example, at how much, amount of taxes before and after. We tried to get a sense of quality. Quality is subjective, so instead we looked at neighborhood comments, and we had most of that from the West University area. But we haven't gone back to say what the impact has been from those projects. And I think we should maybe discuss how we might do that and how that information would be useful going forward. There aren't a lot of financial tools that we have in place right now to incent the kind of development that Envision Eugene is calling for. This is one of those tools, so, but as you've noted, it's not been used extensively. So it may be that out of the Envision Eugene process, additional tools come forward as well as MPTI so that the kind of development and quality and livability that we're calling for, we have a way to encourage.
Well, I mean, to a certain extent, you can analyze it from a financial standpoint because what MPTI does in reality is to create higher land value. And the higher land value, you can then analyze to say, if that land value with the MPTI in place exceeds the value of the property as improved, then there's a good chance for redevelopment. If the improvement value is substantially high in comparison to the land, and you cannot achieve that, then no one typically takes down buildings for the sake of taking them down if they still have value to the property.
Right.
So it's a fairly straightforward process to study it financially, to say, what are the impacts? I mean, you may find in the neighborhood you're talking about that you may only have one or possibly two candidates over the next several years. And I guess, I know there's been concern like in Trainsong where they haven't had any, and truly, MPTI doesn't get the land value even to a positive number, so you'd have to pay somebody to go develop there. So I mean, those analyses can occur, and particularly given, if we talk about an extension today over a 10-year period, we probably have some troubled economic times ahead of us, and so we may not see a lot of increase in improvement values or that ratio that allows these things to occur. And it seems to me, if we're going to put these types of mechanisms in place, we should understand if we can actually achieve a benefit out of them versus just say, gee, it's great when we get one project, or we don't get any.
Commissioner Randall.
I have a two-part question. One, earlier you had mentioned the 23 projects over the last 30 years. How many are now on the tax rolls? And then could you also tell us how many MPTI projects have occurred? Has the majority of that been in like the last five years, 10 years? Do you know that? I mean--
I do know that, but I don't have--
It's been in place for a while, but has the majority been recently, or has it been spread out over the course of that time?
I'm sorry that I didn't bring all of the data that we've completed with me at this time, but 11 projects are now on the tax rolls. And the, they've actually been spread out. We did have a moratorium on MPTI from about, I think, 96 to 2002 for various reasons. But there were, I think it's been actually pretty spread out, and really, it doesn't seem like a lot of projects in that time. But I'm going back to the comment about what it does to the land value and what the impact is. Each of those MPTIs, each of those projects, wouldn't have happened but for the MPTI. But that doesn't mean that they've changed the land value such that it's easier for the next project necessarily to go forward. It means that that particular project added to our desired density in locations where council assumed it, you know, was appropriate. But it didn't necessarily mean that after the MPTIs, after that MPTI is approved, that the project next door can go forward. It doesn't really spill over in terms of the land value. But we have 11, as specific as about your question, 11 are now paying taxes, and that's how we were able to generate the data of how much did you pay before, how much you pay now. And really, I see them spread out over those years.
Commissioner Liedig.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Belcher's comment about River Road, a lot of work's been done on the Razor Park plan. Why does that not put River Road on the list of current areas to look at?
We were looking for a way to have fewer on that list, and we're, if there are six commercial corridors, I'm sorry, six key transit areas and additional commercial corridors, we had to have some way of looking to see which area should go forward faster. And Razor Park did have that major planning effort. We did not see that area as right or with as much immediate identifiable development pressure going forward at this time. But a recommendation could come forward that we take that earlier with the other ones. If that's the decision by the Planning Commission, a recommendation, I could carry that forward.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, I'd like to have that discussion, but the question I was waiting to ask is, how many MPT applications have been denied, and what happened to those projects? Did they get built anyway, if there are any?
I, in going through the applications, it's more typical that a project would be denied and then would come back. There would have been a reason for the denial, and it might come back either in a different configuration or with a different number of units or a different mix. So some of the projects that were denied actually ended up being approved. Some projects were withdrawn, and I don't have those numbers. But typically, it's more typical that a project would be approved either than denied. I can bring those numbers back if that's of interest.
Well, it'd be interesting to know whether, despite failing to get a MPT exemption, whether the project was built anyway, which would indicate we're not, it was a make-or-break deal, and therefore, is MPTI really necessary to build? I know the argument is that they get better if they're, if they go through MPTI, but that's a qualitative argument.
It has, they have to pass the but-for MPTI test. I will actually check into that. It's possible that they don't get built or they're not as big, so that something has to change to make the economics work if it didn't, if it didn't, if it were denied the MPTI.
And I'd be curious to see, as configured for MPTI and as completed.
Okay.
So we know whether or not that incentive really isn't a necessary incentive.
Steve, I'm looking to you for further comment on when we might come back, or--
We could pop with that, with the email as well.
Commissioner Liedig.
Please, sir, Carolyn, can you comment on the zoning plan designation issue in Jefferson West Side, MDR versus R3? Or that way, what's happened there and where you're going to be going?
The assistant, the deputy city attorney is working on a response to Mr. Conti.
Is that Emily?
Yep. So I don't have anything more to add. I'm waiting, I'm awaiting her response as well.
Do you have any estimate of when that might occur?
I know that she's working on it.
Thank you.
It seems like this is one of the few financial incentive options that the city has to implement higher density in these transit-oriented and commercial core areas for Envision Eugene. The flip side of it, of course, is getting with the neighborhoods to fill in any vacuums that there might be about concerns that they have with how this develops and what all it means, and perhaps they could have a role in developing some of the compatibility criteria, however that portrays itself. But right now, all this is doing is just continuing to get the ball rolling for those discussions, right?
Commissioner Byler.
Yes, I'm curious too, if the input process might be different for a transit corridor MPTI versus a neighborhood-based or an area-based MPTI, where it seems to me that you would have maybe some different kinds of compatibility concerns in the neighborhood than you would along the transit corridor. So that would be, that would be something, I guess, I would be interested in.
I think you're absolutely right, and we do need to kind of explore the specific areas and look closely at what the compatibility issues might be, and of course involve the neighborhoods to see what their level of input, their interest in input is. You know, there are a number of scenarios. You could just keep it to the main street and just those commercially designated properties along that street that already have, you know, those entitlement rights to develop. It seems like if we were to move beyond that, off of the main street, we would obviously want to have more input from the neighborhoods that are affected by that.
Back to the potential of River Road. I think it's probably premature at this point for me to speak for the community organization that's there. So I guess I'm comfortable with waiting for another round to bring River Road up for suggestion. So they have an opportunity to comment beforehand as opposed to having me speak for them. Is there going to be a citizen involvement plan for this process, and if so, will it come before us for approval?
We are trying to weave the discussion of MPTI into the discussions regarding Envision Eugene. So I had not anticipated a separate citizen involvement project or program for MPTI. Do you want to add to that?
I think we may, I think we will certainly have a strategy, and it will be, Nan's right,
it will come out of the Envision Eugene proposal. I think we'd be happy to, you know, send that to you if you have an interest in that. We'd be happy to do that.
I guess I'm struck by the concerns we've heard from neighborhood organizations.
Sure.
I understand their concerns.
Right.
It seems to me that there is process proposed for them to be involved, but I would like to have an opportunity--
About what that looks like.
I guess I just want to clarify that I, the impact that I heard from the neighbors might suggest that they believe we're asking for a recommendation for approval at this time as opposed to asking or informing that, ultimately asking council for approval to go forward and begin that engagement process. So I think any concerns raised will be adequately, will be an opportunity for them to be addressed within a pretty robust process, particularly in the West University neighborhood. So I don't know if that's a perception issue, just what in fact we're asking for today or Wednesday at council.
Well, again, if you would just inform us of how that process is moving forward, that would provide yet another set of eyes to help make sure people's concerns are met.
Yep.
I guess that also underlines what I think I heard regarding the first step involves the West University area, and that that could begin with a public forum. I think that's a good way to start weaving that into the process. Commissioner Duncan.
I decided not to make the comment.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? Thank you very much, Nan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nan.
Our next agenda item is Envision Eugene.
One more thing. When the assistant city attorney crafts a response for Jefferson West Side, could we see a copy of that, too?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Envision Eugene. Patricia Thomas, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. So, sorry, we could not turn that off for the previous presentation. Thanks for this opportunity to bring you an update on the South Willamette Pilot Project. The last that you heard about it was in June, late in June. When we came to you with an update on the opportunity siding project, we talked about the visioning going on in South Willamette. At that time, the visioning was looking for opportunities for dense housing, but it was in the context of a much broader request from the community that was interested in a robust business, shopping, and entertainment district, and a better place for housing, a mix of kinds of housing, and also a lot of transportation issues, all things that relate so closely with Envision Eugene. So the project expanded naturally to include those interests and to better connect with the Envision Eugene process. So here specifically, the request from the community was, in summary, for compact urban living and strong business with really important components about moving around the neighborhood. People were very interested in a complete street where you can drive, definitely walk more safely, have better sidewalks, bike through the area, which is difficult now, as well as take transit. The businesses wanted a fresh inviting business district with walkable shopping and visibility, and the neighborhoods, as I said, wanted much more variety in the types of housing and denser housing, row houses, maybe even tall buildings. You're familiar with this, of course, the pillars in Envision Eugene. The two pillars that are relevant to the work that we're doing in South Willamette are the promote compact urban development and efficient transportation options, and considering this all as a part of an area planned through a vision that looks at transportation, land use parks, open space, green areas, and all of that together. And at the same time, remember the important, importance of livability and using area planning as a tool to integrate all of that. This map, which you looked at earlier, just shows you the context for where area planning might be applied. On the right is, this green line defines the district around South Willamette. This is Willamette Street. This is 29th going across here. It's so dark, but this is green. This is Amazon Park. This is the school district, the Willard Site. Everything you see in this gold color, of course, is medium density. Pink is commercial, and there's some medium density here. This is medium-high. So that's generally the district that is being looked at. So we've been holding a lot of meetings and discussions to talk about how to strengthen this area as a whole and how to accommodate growth. This is what it looks like going into South Willamette from downtown. It's so interesting to see how shaped it is by Spencer Butte. As you begin to look at integrated planning for an area, think about the natural features around it.
I've never noticed that, driving down that road like that. I'm always looking at traffic.
Yeah.
It's the way they took the photo.
And lots of times we hear people--
They're just stopped in the middle.
Are looking at the traffic and maybe even not looking at the businesses on the side or where they're headed. So there's a big discussion going on about how best to move through the area and what's most beneficial for business. It's also shaped by Amazon Park and the school district site. Oh. So what all is, what all is going on in South Willamette that makes it great for this study? There's a vibrant mix of uses. There's a lot of community interest in building on the success. It's good timing as part of Envision Eugene. There's a lot of past work that's gone on in the community, some studies of the street, for example, and of course, it's consistent with where we are in Envision Eugene. Some more images of the area. Here's the approach from Amazon Parkway. Right here is where 27th Avenue takes off, so sort of a lateral introduction into the area. Here, this is the same street facing toward downtown, Willamette Street. Here, arriving by bus, arriving by car. This is, this is the area further to the sou, or pardon me, to the north, around 25th, 26th, some well-known stores, Down to Earth, Capella, other stores in that area, little shopping center. And then this is more the 29th and Willamette area. It's a little more, larger parking areas, of course, with the Woodfield Station, the Credit Union, and drive-in uses. And then there's some new housing. And then there's some new housing. This is actually new duplexes that have occurred over on Portland Streets, and this is the typical street between Amazon Park and Willamette. And here's some newer housing, Cascade Manor expansion several years ago, sort of a rowhouse feel facing the street. I really am sorry these don't project well here, but this is an established, multiple-family apartment building closer to the South Town shops. So we've done a lot. We've been doing a lot of talking over the last couple of years. I won't go through all of these, but you can probably read them quickly about the different size, different groups we've met, small groups, large groups. We've had workshops, quite a few one-to-one listening sessions. There've been quite a few newsletters published by various, the neighborhood, the business group, SOBA is the South Town Business Association, FAN is Friendly Area Neighborhood, and the city has had a couple newsletters. And then recently, in the spring, I think we mentioned this when we were here in June, the U of O had an architecture studio, look at this area, to generate some ideas for people to respond. And of course, we've had surveys online and physical surveys, and we've had a successful grant application, which you'll hear more about. It also relates to some other current planning that's going on. Certainly, the people locally have organized. There's a pedestrian and bicycle master plan that looks at this area and some important changes that are wanted there. The 20-minute neighborhood interest or study is part of the Climate and Energy Action Plan outcomes. And then, of course, we're doing visioning to create a district area plan. So the good news, some really exciting news, is that the city applied for a transportation growth management grant and was awarded approximately $150,000 or more perhaps to study Willamette Street itself and create a pre-engineering concept design. As part of that, there'll be really a robust public outreach process. We have staff here from Public Works if there are questions later on this. But this just demonstrates that it is Willamette Street itself that we'll be looking at. What other things are we doing right now? We have a website that we keep updated. The neighborhood also has a website they keep updated. We have almost 300 people on the interest list that have participated in events. Unknown numbers of people are talking to each other in the district. And we have a display of the student design works in the atrium that's gotten quite a bit of attention. And those are also on the web along with the survey. So I'm going to run through the student designs just really quickly. We won't get into any detail, but just to give you an idea of the scope of things they are considering. On here, I think the colors represent new development or redevelopment or some change to existing. I think one of the interesting things to help organize it, again, Willamette is north-south, 29th is east and west, Amazon Park is over here. The sort of brown color you see on here represents a pedestrian connection, and a number of, there are four schemes, and a number of them reinforce the connection that somehow from Amazon Park over to Woodfield Station. And this one comes along 28th Avenue in the area of the South Town shops, and they look at a lot more greenery and a lot of redevelopment. And each of these concepts looks at sort of an iterative incremental implementation over years, what it might look from the short term to the long with new buildings arrayed along 29th, for example, and facing the park with housing. The second one shows a little more ambitious redevelopment. The students were asked to be visionary. That was their role. And they did meet with residents and business people and took, and they were free to take risks. Again, you know, here's a lot of pedestrian connection. They're introducing green wherever they can into the parking lot, along the park here, and showing some row houses. And this is how this one might, could evolve over the long term in the students' vision. These were groups of students. A third one, this one had an interesting concept. They broke the area into three districts, sort of called this the foyer, the entrance to the neighborhood, up at 24th to 26th. They called the central district here from 26th to 27th, or maybe it's 25th to 27th, as the entertainment area with public spaces and a lot of small businesses. And then they called this area down here, a little more car-oriented, the essentials, with a variety of businesses providing essentials. And there's their image for how that could evolve over time, a very ambitious amount of redevelopment here. A lot of them looked at the park as a huge resource that could benefit more people. More people could face the park with more residents along there. Here are row houses, and behind it would be some taller buildings that could look over the row house so that it's more of a community asset to, visual asset to more residents in their homes. And this last concept, the students in this group really looked at 27th Avenue as an important connection off Amazon Parkway, thinking of some of the transportation issues and getting cars through Willamette Street. They actually suggested roundabouts right there and right there, and this would be sort of a public area with some public plazas surrounding it, bringing traffic in this way into this more trafficked area, and maybe this would be a little more quieter area here. Again, more development along the park, but introducing some green spaces behind it. And then they had these blocks of buildings, like mixed-use buildings facing the streets, bringing the buildings up to the streets, and treated this as sort of this residential and shopping, pedestrian shopping area. And here's how this played out in their view over the long, long term. So we had a, recently, a week ago today, a couple of you were able to stop by, a design workshop in the library in which I think over, we had about 60 people in the room looking at different ideas, and they had a chance to work on overlay maps. People were asked what they thought the street character might be, what parks and public spaces might occur, and what building types should be placed specifically in certain locations on the map. Here's the room full of people with their maps, getting ready to work on it. And these are such good photos. I really wish they showed better here, but they worked with brightly colored paper, and here's Willamette Street, for example, on this, and red represents commercial, and these different yellows represent different densities of housing. And so people cut out paper, glued, taped, cut out foam core, added layers, and then came up with eight different sets of ideas that were photographed as they went along. So some major themes, I won't probably touch on all these, but designing Willamette Street is very important, even though there will be a process for Willamette Street later. It's really hard for any of us to totally ignore it in this discussion. So making the street and the area more beautiful and being really careful about decisions that might hurt business visibility and access. But it's so important from everyone's perspective to make it safer to walk, provide more pedestrian connections, and safer to bike. People want us to remember that it is a through street from south to north and that traffic impacts do affect other residential areas. Business people believe that a trafficked district is good for business, and they need lots of people to see them and reach them. Here's another group working. Here's notes they left on each of them. We'll be compiling those, summarizing those, and have that available soon. Walking and biking, so significant as part of this project. So people had a lot of ideas about connections east to west, more connections to Oak Street, the idea of using alleys, and enhancing the connection between Amazon Park at 27th Got to roll this the other way. And the area needs more kinds of housing, and businesses, we heard specifically, really welcome more residents as customers. So things we just talked about, being close to the park, using Willard School site in some way for denser housing, but maintaining some open space. And housing mixed with business could be along a number of streets, varied by table, but Willamette Street, 29th Avenue, Oak Street, and near South Town shops. And here's a final picture. Happy participants, the table, their finished product. And that's the end of my presentation, and we can take questions.
Thank you, Patricia. Questions?
Thank you.
Well, I guess maybe this is the last question, but what's next?
Well, we want to bring all that information together to develop a draft concept area plan. Several staff are working on this and the process to get there. Hopefully, in the winter, that would be, we'd have a draft plan to look at. As part of that, we will be looking for opportunities for dense housing, continue to do that, looking for pilots. And also, in the winter, late winter, the Transportation Growth Management Grant will begin. It's looking like about a March start, if that's still correct. And it's hoped that the concept area plan, the foundation for that, will be in place as a jumping off point then for looking at how that could be implemented through the transportation plan, which will also be a concept plan.
And that will look specifically at street design and.
At Willamette Street.
Biking pit as well.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's a chicken or egg issue, but certainly something's got to give, streetwise, before other things can happen, I would think.
I guess one other thing is the previous conversation about incentives and MPT. This process will help inform where those might be applied. That'll be for that, that'll help with that discussion.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Leidig.
So a concept plan, have we done concept plans before? How is that different from functional plans and refinement plans?
Sorry, thank you.
Well, I mean, concept plan, probably the most similar example, a similar example is the Walnut area work that was done and the implementation through a form-based code. Those kind of tools will be considered for this. It's highly expected at this point. We'd take a look at a form-based code to document this concept. It's a little different than a refinement plan, which is more policy-based and not such a physical plan that says where different uses might be or how use might change in a district specifically. And get, with a concept plan, we would hope to move through more steps of implementing it.
Okay, like Walnut Station?
Yes.
I think another, another thought I have is kind of the connections between the different uses in the area. So what's the connection between the dense housing, the commercial development, the parks and open space, the transportation system? It's kind of a physical vision for how the area might develop over time and what are those important connections to make.
Commissioner Duncan.
One of the challenges on Willamette Street is the narrowness of the right-of-way. Is there intent through the process? Because again, I realize these are student plans, but some of the things that occurred before is when redevelopments occurred, we required things to be pushed up to the sidewalk. I'm going to point to, or the credit union that's on the corner that couldn't expand that intersection because of the location. Is there thoughts to recognize that at some point, particularly with a lot of these plans, that may be of need for widening of streets and so on, and not necessarily the whole street, but areas for turnouts or for bus stops or for things like that?
I think you point out a lot of the important challenges that are going to have to be addressed both in the concept area plan as well as in the street design. There are a lot of hopes for it being a complete street to accommodate everything, but there's also the reality that the right-of-way width is perhaps not large enough for everything. So there will need to be a study of the options there in the context of the overall intent, long range, in terms of uses and where buildings are. Certainly, any plan would have to consider how it could be incrementally implemented over a long, long period of time.
That was my second request, is that we've tended in a lot of our studies to say, okay, we're here at point A, and implementation is B, which is way over here, decades away. It'd be nice if we could see as part of this process, the roadmap that we move on to get from A to B, because that seems to be a place that is quite often neglected in our planning processes, is how do we get there from here? Particularly, how do you get the first half dozen projects to go forward?
Commissioner Warrens.
Commissioner Duncan, addressing one of my concerns is about traffic impacts. If we're, I don't know how many more people we're planning on with these pictures we've seen, how many more people that equates to be in the area, but I would imagine that the traffic impacts are going to be phenomenal. And the other thing is, you know, I recognize that area really well because I live there, very close to it. And I see new buildings and multi-family dwellings and higher rises, and there are houses there now, and so do we wait until we go for sale or do we use eminent domain to proceed with these projects? I mean, how do we get the property to make these projects go forward? That's what I'm wondering, and, you know, how friendly of a process is that going to be? I mean, I'm all for the densification, but I just wonder, I mean, how are we, how are we looking at that?
I mean, I don't think there's any notion that there's a city implementation strategy that would include eminent domain of private properties. I think what we're trying to do is put in incentives, remove barriers to let things happen in accordance with this vision that we're creating, so.
So for instance, if an area is kind of identified for a higher density, we could potentially redesignate or rezone that property. We wouldn't be requiring that property to change its use until the owner of that property made that decision to sell it, somebody wanted to do it or do it on their own. So that would kind of be the process there.
Then it'd be market-driven.
Yeah.
And an incremental approach to, say, some of the walking and biking, well, the building to walk around the district, for example, one of the first triggers might be to identify a place for a surface parking lot so people could do more park and walk when they come to the area. So I think if, in terms of housing, you know, we might find some first steps that trigger changes gradually rather than taking wholesale big steps.
Commissioner Leidig.
I forget, is Willamette Street a designated MX route?
I don't believe it is.
It's in the long-term plan.
It is?
Yeah.
But not in the regional transportation plan. LTD is redefining the levels of transit service on the different routes. It looks like South Willamette will be changing.
I think it's fair to call it a major transit corridor.
So not MX?
Probably not expecting full MX as we know it now on Franklin.
On Willamette.
On Willamette.
Right, got it.
But using the Franklin model, it probably won't fit.
Yeah.
On Willamette.
Okay. I'm just wondering, with the transportation management grant, growth management grant, you're going to study bus or transit on the route too?
Yeah. It's been a while since I've been here. Kurt, Public Works.
Kurt, so we can.
I'll also introduce, who's probably going to be the project manager, Chris Henry from Public Works is here also. I participated in a ElCog sponsored walkability workshop back in 2004, and folks looked at this stretch of Willamette and said, oh, we need big wide sidewalks and walkability. Later, for the Ped Bike Master Plan, cyclists looked and said, you know, there's not a good bicycle network in this part of town. We need bike lanes on Willamette. And LTD had MX on their plans. There's not enough right-of-way, and the way the properties are situated, widening the street significantly to the complete street, probably won't work. Our intention in getting the grant from Transportation Growth Management Project is to pull all the interest in at one time, discuss the benefits. Oh, another thing that's come up, one of the neighborhood groups is looking at, they prefer streetcars, not even bus service there. So let's get it all on the table. What are the options? What are the pros and cons? Working with the land use piece and the design piece that's coming out of Chris's project, and try to settle once and for all, what is the optimal strategy for this neighborhood? Where will the bike lanes be? Where will transit? What type of transit? How will it be phased? And then with any luck, we'll be able to proceed more easily.
That ought to take you three or four months, Kurt.
We're hoping once it gets going, more like six. Lot of time gearing up, having a strong citizen participation plan, and, but then a concentrated effort on getting people in and discussing this. So it's all together and we don't lose people.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, again, this is not an island in the middle of nowhere. I'm wondering, when you do your transit study, will you look again at what happens to the north? For example, as I recall, when we looked at. For example, as I recall, when we looked at the changes that occurred at 18th and Willamette, we said, we're not done here. We need to come back and do further study to see how this works and whether it needs to be adjusted. And then you have that 24th and so forth peel-off that goes over to Amazon or over to Oak. Will the traffic study, even though it's not directly in the corridor, look at that part of Willamette and the way it functions as well?
Probably only in a limited fashion. So there's a lot of study that went on before about the converting to two-way and was inconclusive or decided not to proceed. We are also not including the Civic Stadium site as part of this. So we can make some estimates about future development for the traffic, but we're not going to tackle all the issues in determining what the main stretch of this and the connections to the other streets are.
Well, you pre-guested my second question, which is, should and assumingly will the stadium site will undergo some sort of planning process and change, how will that dovetail into this project?
I'm guessing we will be making some assumptions of this use or that, looking for worst-case or reasonable assumptions about different traffic patterns, folding those into the discussion.
And when that final design comes forward, will it inform the rest of the project's design and development?
The Civic Stadium?
Yeah.
Well, undoubtedly, it will have an impact. The timing will affect things. This concept plan seems to be, it'll be in place before we have any information about that. But as Kurt said, probably have to anticipate a range of possible development scenarios there.
Well, it strikes me that that area is likely to change faster than all the rest, so it seems logical to take advantage of that.
Commissioner Byerly.
I'm sure that you'll get to this in your public process, but in the event that bicycling routes can't be on Willamette, to ensure that there's some attractive business interface with wherever it is rooted, there's nothing worse than showing up on a bike and being directed to the back sides of buildings.
It's one of our top priorities for our project.
Any other questions from?
I just had a chance to drop in at the workshop that Patricia recently facilitated, and I was happy to see how many folks were there. I didn't stay throughout the whole process, but they seemed to be getting engaged in that charrette-type activity, so that was good.
Thank you. People were engaged, and it was a lot of fun for people to have the chance to do a visual exercise like that.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, I too was there, and I was very impressed with the level of engagement and interest and involvement and thoughts that folks had. They were really getting into it. We talked about opportunity citing being both a project or, I guess, planning department-initiated processes, which is what I see this to be. Have you had any interest at all, either from developers or neighborhoods, in going that other leg, which is the private sector or neighborhoods proposing projects as well? Are any of those coming forward at all?
Well, given the economy, there have just been some murmurs occasionally of interest in a project and some questions. Been able essentially just to test our facilitative incentives and how can we provide more information to people regarding specific sites. There have not been that many inquiries. There have been a few in the South Willamette area, wondering, asking questions like, is MPT going to be in South Willamette, for example? Or when something might be in place in that area. We also have very beginnings of work on that site-specific flexible adjustment review, which is starting to look more like a design review process with a neighborhood engagement process, certainly early on. So that will be up and coming, but not, it's not on the current, as current we're planning as the visioning here.
Look forward to seeing that when it happens.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much, Patricia. And Kurt, thank you also. Good job. Good update. Thank you very much. Next agenda item, items from other commissioners? Mr. Belcher.
I hope I sent you three messages that were sent to some of us on the Planning Commission. I thought it was important that all of them, they came from members of the Sustainability Commission, me and Nelson, in regards to the input we provided on the housing mix and housing affordability. So I just wanted to make sure everyone had access to that.
Other items from commissioners? I guess I'll introduce, shall we?
Sure. Well, actually, can I give a quick update that's related to that first?
Yes.
We're speaking in code. So last week, the city council did the balloting and interviews for the new planning commission. Two spots that are filling, Commissioner Byerly and Commissioner Warrens', vacancies. And so they held interviews last week, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, I can't remember now. And tonight, they are scheduled to take action on the appointments. So I'll keep you posted after this evening, and then I'll turn it back to you.
To that end, I guess I wanted to, I guess, make it official that we're going to miss having Commissioners Byerly and Warrens on the commission. And Commissioner Byerly's been here one year longer than I have, and I've had a lot of opportunity to work with her, and I've found her to be persistent and very knowledgeable and articulate and patient. And I really appreciated working with her. I haven't had the opportunity to spend as much time working with Commissioner Warrens. She was only with us for a short time, and that's our misfortune, I think, that she's not able to continue with us. But I do appreciate her outspokenness and courage to speak, which is a good thing.
Commissioner Belcher.
I would like to thank Heidi particularly for trying to change the dress code among the males in the group. Not terribly successful.
Oh, yeah. You get long sleep.
And I also appreciate Lisa's thoughts and concerns for the neighborhood as we've gone through these processes. I miss you both. Thank you.
I think we missed an opportunity to all wear plaid today. So we have a cake, just as a little thank-you celebration and wishing you both well and your next endeavors.
Each should have.
And I think...
I'm going to come in plaid. Together.
Oh, sure. I'll cut, you serve, huh?
I don't know if either of you had anything you wanted to say to the commission. If not, perhaps we could adjourn following that if you did.
I've certainly very much enjoyed participating with this group of plaid, stripey people. I appreciate the congeniality in the group. It's always one thing that I really talk up when people ask me what's it like working on the commission. I really appreciate it that we can happily disagree and happily agree on so many things. And I'm going to miss this, you know? It's been really a stable part of my life that always seems to be in flux and changing, and it's been really a huge part of my growth process. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Yes, I, it was a hard decision for me to come to terms with, having to leave this, because these issues in front of us are really important to me. And I really appreciate, you know, being able to be, you know, able to speak my mind here without being judged or rated, just to, you know, the open-mindedness. And I am, I am going to regret missing out on the opportunity to be involved in some of the issues on the table. So it was a very good learning process for me, and I hope to be able to serve on a body like this in the future, or maybe come back at some point when I feel like I can take the kind of time away, you know, to take the time away from work and so forth. But it was a tough decision for me to choose, you know, my clients for this, and so I had to choose the clients, so thank you all.
Good luck to you both.
Yeah.
Yes, very much.
I noticed they gave me a plastic knife.
I know.
It's Uber safe. Looks like a Halloween prop.
I know. It is.
I guess with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you all.[1793.36]